But there'll be.
My understanding is turning it off will not help. Or turning it silent will not help. My gosh, you're hard to ebb and not talk. You have been for a while now. I miss it. Come on.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission. It's October 4th, 2023. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The open meeting to act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of today's meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. I would also like to bring to your attention that at 1:20 today, there will be a nationwide test of the emergency alert system. We will briefly pause at that time in which there may be a disruption due to the broadcast for a few moments, and then we will continue with the meeting. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 1.5 Special Permit 22045A. 1.6 Special Permit 23032. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 20th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the revised minutes.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Minutes approved, nine to zero. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing, unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will then be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda? I will please note that Item 1.1 Text Amendment 23013, there is a request to pull that from Consent Agenda to Public Hearing, and we also have received a request for Item 1.5 Special Permit 22045A to remove from Consent Agenda to Public Hearing. First item now for public hearing is our Consent Agenda is Item 1.2 Change of Zone 19031C to amend an existing Chateau at Yankee Hill PUD Plan Unit Development to modify the O3 Office District within the PUD to allow restaurant as a permitted use on property generally located at South Fortia Street and Yankee Hill Road. Item 1.3 Change of Zone 23064 from AGR Agricultural District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at 7005 and 7155 South 75th Street. Next, Item 1.6 Special Permit 23032 to allow for a cupola exceeding the 35-foot height limit in the AG District by 10 feet on property generally located at 3770 West Vine Street. This item is final action. Next, Item 1.7 Street and Alley Vacation 23007 to vacate the street right of way to South 70th Street lying adjacent to property generally located adjacent to 6601 South 70th Street. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
Shelley, there is a question about 1.4, which has been removed.
That is going to be a request for deferral. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
If there is anyone here wishing to speak on these consent agenda items, please stand and state that item.
All right, so we will be pulling two items. There's a request for deferral, so there's no one here wants to speak on any items still on the consent agenda. Okay, great, thanks. Shelley, can... We need a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy.
Fight? With this information.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Just wanted to note that we did receive a letter of opposition on Change of Zone 23064. Wanted to bring that to your attention because it just came in within the last hour or so. And so if people have not had a chance to read that, if you want to take that item off consent, you certainly could. But we did want to note for the record that we received a very late letter of opposition on that item.
Okay. Same with the second. Okay, so it has been moved and seconded to continue with approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, nine to zero.
All right, I will now ask Shelley to call the request for deferral.
A request has been made for a two-week deferral in which to advertise an added waiver request for Item 1.4 Special Permit 1304AB, which is amending an existing special permit to increase the maximum number of residents at the residential healthcare facility from 18 to 21 people on property generally located at 740 South 17th Street. This would defer action to the October 18th, 2023 hearing.
Move to defer. Ederton?
Second, Campbell.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, nine to zero.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak today on this application? And just... Oh, no. All right. We will now proceed to public hearing. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff member should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak, unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The green light indicates the start time for testimony. The yellow light represents one minute remaining. The red light indicates that your five minutes has expired, and the clerk will indicate your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as a part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing, unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
First item for public hearing is Item 1.1 Text Amendment 23013 amending the Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 4.36.030 duties and powers to add accessory dwelling design standards, Chapter 4.36040 Advisory Review Process to rename the reference for the objectives of the Urban Design Committee. Chapter 4.36.050 Meetings, Rules, and Notice of Public Hearings to add accessory dwelling design standards, Chapter 4.36.070 Appeals to add accessory dwelling design standards to add Chapter 4.36.080 Jurisdiction of the Community Relative to Other Boards, Chapter 27.56.040 Nebraska Capital and Environment Commission, created to increase the X of A non-voting members from three to four, Chapter 27.57.110 Powers and Duties to add text to make recommendations to the Mayor, City Council, Planning Commissions, City Boards, and City Departments in matters relating to historic preservation, Chapter 27.57.180 to decrease the period of appeal to City Council from 30 days to 14 days, and to add Chapter 27.57.190 jurisdiction of the commission relative to other boards.
I'm with Gopal Krishnan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The Planning Department is updating some sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code that govern the three design review boards, the Urban Design Committee, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Nebraska Capital and Environment Commission, to clearly reflect the review process. The amendments will increase efficiency by clearly demonstrating the jurisdiction of each board relative to the others. The amendments have been shared with the three design review boards, with the Urban Development Department and the Law Department within the city for their input and comments. The primary purpose of these text amendments is to revise and in some cases add sections to the existing code to help simplify the design review process and consequently facilitate better coordination and decision-making among these groups. And most importantly, to determine which board takes final action depending on the location and the nature of the project. The proposed amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan as they are intended to clarify areas of Lincoln Municipal Code, inform the different boards of their duties, and ensure smooth interaction. The design review boards have different areas of expertise, but not every project review fits entirely into one of those areas. And currently, the municipal code provides minimal guidance on how to operate when projects relate to the expertise of more than one board. The text amendments include some minor and major changes. The minor changes pertain to the inclusion of the word accessory, three words, accessory dwelling units to the list of Urban Design Committee review items. In the Historic Preservation District, clarifying their role on advisory reviews and revision of the appeal period, bringing it down from 30 days to 14 days to be consistent with the other review boards. In the Capital and Environment District, correction of the number of ex officio non-voting members from three to four to be consistent with the other sections of the Capital and Environment District. The major amendments in the Urban Design Committee and Historic Preservation District are addition of a new section named jurisdiction of the committee relative to the other boards. This section can be best understood when seen with the design review flow chart provided in the package. The flow chart will not be in code, but will be on the website, and a link will be provided to it. This would alleviate any ambiguity as to which board is responsible to take action and which board provides recommendation. Thank you. Open to comments.
Questions? At this time. So now are you also the applicant? Staff applicant, because it is a city code revision of code. All right, then, in that case, we will take testimony in support.
From who?
Support, yeah.
Good afternoon. My name's Peter Cat, K-E-T-T. My address is 633 Apples Way, Lincoln, Nebraska. I apologize for taking this relatively routine item, pulling it off of consent. But last week, when I was reading through the Planning Commission coming up, it talked about ADUs. I'm an ADU fan. And I thought, what a wonderful opportunity with what I'm working at mentally, at least in my approach, about ADUs, the value they add to our community to come up and address the public. And one of my objectives is to find and recruit other ADU fans. So the planning staff, our planning department, was way ahead of their times when they first proposed this accessory dwelling unit proposal years ago. And it got merciful, it just got hacked to pieces by the public that didn't want it. And there was no advocacy group to support implementation of ADUs in Lincoln. And we're left with the wreck that we have for ADUs. And I think the materials I sent, they don't keep track of them. But at most, we have five ADUs over all this time. The reason for that, part of this, design standards and appeals, the process and complexity of getting an ADU approved in this community is impossible. When I was campaigning for city council, I ran into a number of people that said, yeah, we tried. Didn't want to put up with it. It's just too hard. So one of the things that I want to do is create a group that will try to make it more reasonable to get ADUs done. And I'm actively looking for people to help on ADUs. And I also believe that Lincoln could use a YIMBY chapter. We're all familiar with NIMBYs, not in my backyard. YIMBYs are yes in my backyard. And it's a California organization that I've reached out to and talked about. And basically, their mantra is real simple. Every new dwelling unit is a great dwelling unit because we're so far behind, we need to create more. It's an all-of-the-above solution to housing, whatever it takes. And so if, in your influence circles, you know people that are in all-of-above housing solution or they want ADUs, have them reach out to me. I'm going to be having some meetings. This is a little bit of a hobby on mine. But if you look at our comp plan... I'm glad you mentioned that that was going to happen. Should I just pause for a bit?
A little early, though.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the first time. I heard that ring. Okay. All right, thanks.
So if you know people, let them reach out to me. I think it's important, and why is it important? So our comp plan identified, I don't know, probably been 10 years ago, the need to create an additional, and we've contemplated four, five, 6,000 dwelling units within the core of the city. Where are they? How are we going to create them? Accessory dwelling units are the most affordable dwelling unit that you can create. It's the dwelling unit that takes advantage of all the existing infrastructure that we have. And to the extent that people are able to generate some additional... They'll remember my talk. Some additional income from their properties, I think it's a good thing. And there's a lot of interesting things happening throughout the country with this in terms of diversity, inclusion, fairness, of making sure that the ability to have housing units in all places in our community is done. And I think this is a part of it. So I just wanted to raise it. I'm going to be working on it. If you know of others that are interested in working in this area, please have them reach out to me. The group so far that has expressed some interest was kind of intriguing to me, the Climate Action Group, because they were interested in it in terms of taking advantage of existing investments and not sprawling. So thank you for putting up with this and my time and taking this item off the consent agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, we do have.
Peter, one of the things that we did was we wrote our old city standards for our PUD. And so there are many dwelling units, associated dwelling units throughout Village Gardens. And so I would be happy to work with you on that.
So that's perfect. That's a good example. Now, the problem is that that only applies when you have a PUD. And if you have one ADU you want to put in your backyard somewhere in the existing city, you can't afford to hire me. You can't afford to hire the attorney to go do a PUD for a neighborhood. And so if you look at the California example, now they implemented it at a statewide level. And they just said, listen, communities, you're not going to make this difficult. You're going to let ADUs. Everybody gets an ADU. Everyone. It's by right. You just go file your permit and you get it. I don't know that Lincoln would probably be comfortable going that far. But the closer we get to that model, the better. And so it's easier to write it into new. It's harder to get it written into older neighborhoods.
That's very valid.
So thanks, Mr. Campbell.
All right. Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to testify in a neutral position or anyone who would like to testify in opposition? All right. Any more questions for staff?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed.
And I would move that we approve Text Amendment 23013.
Second, Joy.
Discussion?
I think this is a great move in clearing up things and making them more understandable. And our city codes is always a good move. I thank you for your work.
Yeah, anything that adds efficiency and clarity, especially when it comes to our city code, makes a lot of sense. And all of this flowed together really well.
Yeah, thank you. It's always nice when things can be more efficient and lead to more housing, so fantastic. Thank you. All right. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item for public hearing is Item 1.5 Special Permit 22045A to allow for an expansion of the Holly Corners CUP Community Unit Plan by .32 acres, more or less, to add eight additional dwelling units with associated waivers on property generally located at 2537 Vine Street. This is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon. Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, 68508. This is a request to amend the existing Holly Corners Community Unit Plan, so amending the special permit. This is located along Vine Street, so just on the south side. The area outlined in black here is the existing CUP. And this area to the north would be the amendment adding in. And then this is just west of 27th Street. Currently today, it's zoned R6 all around the property. And then to the northeast, there's B3 at the corner of 27th and Vine. The proposed amendment would allow for development of eight townhome units. They'd be facing U Street, and then to the north would be facing Vine. Currently, it was a single multifamily house that had been there, I believe, over 100 years. And that's been demolished. And now the applicant would like to add into the CUP, keeping it R6, but would allow for the requested waivers for the development. Within the site layout, they're proposing each lot to face a public street, and then a private driveway then would come to the rear of the units for garage parking. The associated waivers with the special permit are mainly related to the setbacks on the property. So they are requesting reduced setbacks for both the front sides on Vine and U Street, and then a reduced rear setback to the multifamily to the west. And one additional setback on there would be to allow the front porches to extend beyond the front yard setback, which is common with, especially as an infill project in an older neighborhood. This was supported with the Holly Corners CUP. And then as well as the Antelope Village PUD to the south also had a similar provision allowing front porches. The density in the CUP currently allowed six units. This would allow additional eight. Just for reference, with the size of the CUP, it'd be a little over an acre. And following our density calculation would allow, I believe, up to 65 dwelling units is what would be allowed by right or by density for the code. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you repeat that? So you're saying for the CUP as a whole, it's 65, it would be 65 dwelling units?
That's what the code would cap out on, would be 65. In this case, they'd add the additional eight. So the CUP would only permit 14 dwelling units at this time within the new boundary.
The buildings that are on Vine Street, like on 25th, on the north side, they're right up on the sidewalk, too. So similarly, that's, it would be similar to that in terms of how that...
Correct. Yeah, the multifamily to the north would be close to Vine. And this would have a 10-foot setback on Vine. And a little bit of working with L2U on that, this would be, I guess, an addition to the property in that right now, the house that was just demolished was right on the property line. So it sat very close to Vine. And then with this development, L2U would be requiring the removal of a driveway that went right onto Vine Street. So there'd be no access onto Vine anymore.
Ben, will there be sidewalks? There room for sidewalks between the building and the street, Vine Street?
Correct. Yeah, the sidewalk would remain that's there today, right up to the property line on Vine. And then there's existing sidewalks on U Street.
Other questions? Thanks. Your testimony from the applicant.
I wasn't expecting to come up here today. And then I was told about five minutes ago that I was. So...
If you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Aaron Bird, 3825 Kilkey Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. He pretty much explained what was going on. Do you have any questions for me that I can, or would you...
How many units are you putting in this townhome?
There's going to be eight doors unit. There's four per side. There'll be a unit in each. So there'll be a total of eight units.
Are these going to be rentals or are you selling them?
No, they'll be renting. No, these are, they'll be rentals.
Market rate?
I assume so. They're all, they are going to be platted individual as well, so if single family wanted to buy and live, they could own a portion of it and not have to buy the whole, so that's another reason why I'm going to plat them individually.
How does, what you're intending for the, the new area, how do those reflect what is going in the current CUP? And it's the same type of multifamily dwelling, is that correct?
Are you, are you referring to the, the original, the original CUP that Neighbor Works is working on?
My understanding, it's being added to the CUP directly to the south.
Correct. We're extending, we're extending the CUP boundaries to allow to adjust some of the setbacks. This property, to begin with, I looked at it years ago, and it has three front streets. So with three front streets and the code that is in place, you are restricted to do much of anything. So when Neighborhood, I think it was Neighborhood Works or Neighbor...
Neighbor Works.
Neighbor Works. Got ahold of it, created a CUP to put some housing in here, then that kind of opened the door to Sister Ron and extend the CUP boundaries. By doing so, it allows us to adjust the setbacks. Well, now, this now starts to make sense. Originally, this was going to be three-story, higher-density, R6, which permits that, and then backed off of that a little bit, talking with Ben, and thought that maybe a better fit would be maybe two-story, single-family, less density, garages in the back, and tried to reduce some of the amount of traffic that was, my intention at first was going to be higher density, but, so we, we backed off of that and created some, some row homes that are individually platted.
Got it. Thank you.
So, you stated eight units, but how many bedrooms in each unit?
There's four bedrooms, two and a half bath, two stall, enclosed garage, family room, kitchen, washroom.
So with the garages in the back, the intent would be that would really just be where all of garbage service, everything would just use that center out there.
Correct. You have to, by, by code, you have to have two off-street parking stalls per unit, so obviously you don't want them on the front, you don't want them on, on 26th Street, so we kind of drafted and designed something that would kind of tuck everything behind it, and that's why we proposed to put the front on Vine and also the front on U, which are the city streets, because you, the North 26th Street is a dead end, so we figured that those were the two front streets that would be visible, so we created something too. Got you though.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will have testimony in support of this application. Is there anyone here testifying in support? Neutral or testimony in opposition?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Wayne Mortensen, M-O-R-T-E-N-S-E-N, at 2530 Q Street. I'm here as the Chief Executive Officer of Neighbor Works Lincoln, and I would, if I can ask a staff question briefly to understand why. Are we approving the expansion of the CUP or also the site plan and the CUP itself today?
Ben Callahan, and this would be approving the expansion of the boundary of the CUP, and then the associated site plan would be as a preliminary.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ben, I appreciate that. As the catalyst of the existing community unit plan, I wanted to come and testify in opposition of this permit. The CUP process, as many of you know, is quite exhaustive and requires the investment of significant time and resources, which now seem to be being exploited by this proposal. While the expansions of CUPs, I'm sure, can often be seen as administrative, the project benefits requires no cost sharing or partnership mechanism with the entity seeking the expansion and that currently overseeing the existing area. The public notice is the first we've heard of this developer's desire to develop this land and utilize our CUP to do so more effectively and efficiently, and more regrettably, it's the first time our Holly Hamlet neighbors have heard, and that does not bode well for this project. These are some of the most involved and genuine residents in the City of Lincoln, whom are committed exclusively and fiercely to fostering an engaged, equitable, and environmentally sustainable and progressive place. This has not been a successful project thus far from an engagement or procedural standpoint, if the first time we're hearing of it is through the public notice process. For these reasons, we request the Commission deny or at least defer this decision until we've had a chance to at least coordinate the work happening with our plan and theirs.
Cindy?
So, this is, this process is really the first that you, you knew about this project or the expansion of the CUP? That's what you just said, right?
Literally through the public notice from the Planning Department. We reached out when we officially put the CUP together initially to the owner at the time, David Fiala, to see if there was any interest in sale to expand at that time. We haven't heard nothing since.
What, what kind of negotiations or compromise are you looking for?
I think that's a better question for who will follow me. Tim and Kay have, Tim Rena and Kay Walter have been the champions of the Holly Hamlet Urban Agriculture Innovation Zone, for lack of a better term, and they will be seeking, I believe, more progressive treatment of garden and open space. I don't know that they have any architectural considerations, but, but certainly the location of eight townhomes would be not in compliance with what this Commission and the city have allowed us to do one block south of this, this area.
Hold on, Gloria?
Do you have other of these townhomes in that area of these sizes that are rental, not under...
Not, not that I'm aware. And the, to be clear, the project that we are developing is three single-family homes located in an array on that corner of 26th and U.
What's the status of that project?
The CUP has been approved. Our variances have all been processed, thanks to the work of the planning team, and Ben specifically, which we appreciate very much, and I believe we're two or three, two or three weeks away from final permits and the demolition of the vacant home that's required for the construction.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Tim Rena, 605 North 26th Street. I hope that I can cram in what I want to say in five minutes, but do you mind if I pass copies of our brochure out here to everybody? I probably wouldn't hurt if I had kept one for myself. All right. Here's the thing, is the Holly Hamlet was the genesis for the Holly Corners CUP, and we started this back in 2009, and if you look at the brochure, everybody got one now, and you open it up, you can see that there's a map on the inside, okay? That is our block bounded by T and U and 25th and 26th Street. Okay? This is a standard two-acre block. There are no vacant lots in it, and yet, over the past 13 years, we have carved out four fifths of an acre, 80 yards of a football field as an equivalent, for food gardens and pollinator habitat. All right? It's not a community garden, it's a neighborhood garden. It's for the people who live there. All right? It isn't that we're opposed to other Lincolnites, it's just that we want people to be able to grow food in their own yards and have access to it without getting on their bike or getting in their car, taking the bus or whatever, okay? It's outright outside your back door, or as the case may be, your front door. All right? Every year, we have 20 neighbors either from within the block or directly across the street from us, because it turns out that you know the people across the street from you better than you know the people catty-corner in your block, all right? Because you never see them. All right? We've been working on this, as I said, for, this is now our 14th growing season. Over that time, Kay and I, going back to 1986 when we bought our, our home in that block, but specifically since 2008 forward, we have spent a total of $1 million in this block that we have invested, okay? And we are in the process right now of establishing a conservation easement for all of the properties where you can see gardening going on, which is in the CUP area, all right? We're, we've been working with Kent Seacrest to establish a conservation easement, which will probably be coming before you folks fairly soon here, all right? To ensure that there will always be green space after Kay and I are dead, so that the neighbors will always be able to garden. All right? We want people to garden. What, I'm going to run out of time here, but one of the most important things is, is that we're talking about particularly people who are lower income having access to food. Food is expensive. It's getting more expensive by the time, and the thing that drops out of your budget first is fresh produce, because it's the most costly. So if we're putting people in low-income areas or in affordable homes and so forth, we want to give them an avenue where they can get healthy food for their diet that's fresh and still make it affordable for them to pay their mortgage. All right? Holly Corners grew out of all of this and is a product of a three-year-long collaboration between Neighbor Works and the Holly Hamlet, and we're still good friends, but it's, it's been extraordinarily stressful, okay? And we're trying to, we're trying to double up affordable housing and home gardening. All right? In the project that we have at 645 North 26th Street, which is the corner lot that we are developing from one domicile into three domiciles, there are no lawns. There are no lawns, but there is a common space in a courtyard fashion between the three houses, so that people will actually be able to be in their kitchens, look out their dining room windows and so forth, and what they will see is garden. We think it's going to be lovely. We can't wait for it to happen. This is our housing model for the future. It's taken us three years to get here, and we haven't even started construction yet. We haven't even started demolition yet, all right, and so forth, but we're on the verge now, and we want this to be a model going forward for what we can do on individual properties and what we can do on individual blocks. By the way, we've met all of our neighbors over the course of doing this, okay? We lived, Kay and I lived in this house for 346, okay? Kay and I lived in this, in our house for 23 years and knew the names of three of our neighbors. Once we started this gardening project, we knew everybody inside of a year and a half. Okay? This is the best neighborhood watch program that you could ever have in your life, and it's fun besides. Okay? So, we want nice, affordable homes and gardening space. All right? Imagine our surprise then, when 10 days ago, we got this letter in the mail that said, "Oh, by the way, Holly Corners is going to be expanded." Okay? All right? We thought, "What are we talking about? What are we talking..." So we went, we looked it up online, looked at the project and so forth, the latest design since they moved away from the large multi-unit thing, all right, where we're going to put everybody in the cracker box, all right? But since they, they've come up with a townhouse design, that's probably as good as we were going to get, and we thought, "You know what? This is okay. Hopefully, it's going to be homeowners rather than renters, but okay, we can live with that. That'll be fine." And then, then we see that there's no green space there. Absolutely none. All we're, all we're going to do is pour concrete and add to the heat island effect in Lincoln, which, by the way, is deadly for gardens, okay? It's impossible to grow in high temperatures where things don't cool down at night. So here we are, after all this time that we have spent trying to create this new model for how we conduct our business in terms of where we live and the neighbors that we work with in our block and so forth, we get a project that comes along, and it's basically business as usual. Okay? We're just going to, you know, pour concrete, we're going to put people there and so forth, they're going to have to drive off to Hy-Vee or wherever they go, Russ's or whatever, to get all the food that they need, because there's going to be no space for them to grow it in their yards. All right? As I said, this is not what we were hoping for. This is not what we wanted to have happen, and, and the terms that come to mind, and I've been thinking about this for days, is blindsided, hijacked, exploited, okay, and so forth. I can even think of worse terms, all right, and so forth. But there is one step that would make it acceptable for me personally, and that would be not eight units, seven units, okay? And take that other housing space and turn it into a garden for the eight residents who live there. If they do that, I personally will grant up my blessing. Anything less, I think, is a perversion of our intent and unneighborly. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Tim?
And by the way, you let me go a minute 18 long. Bless you all.
I had the pin up. I was getting ready, but I could see you were wrapping up, so. All right, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for, for coming up and speaking to it. So, to be clear, your green spaces in the CUP where the three houses are south of what's being requested here?
Yeah. Could I, here? Here's an extra one. Okay. So, the CUP project is right here, this corner, okay? That's the one where we're building the three houses, but the CUP itself in its entirety is here, 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 and over here. It's a backwards L. Oh, thank you. See, Wayne is good at this stuff.
He's been here before.
Point him out again for us.
Oh, my God, this is handy. Okay, so anyway, all right, so it's this backward L, all right? And Kay and I own this house, this house, this house, and now the common area here. We originally brought, bought the corner property in April of 2020 with the intention of retaining the garden space, but working with Neighbor Works to put three houses where there had been one, and two of those three houses will be affordable homes, where they will sell for in the neighborhood of $180,000 to a first-time home buyer, which is exactly what we're about. So we're beyond, the other one will be market value to help defray the cost of selling these other houses at a subsidized rate. Am I getting to your questions, sir?
You did. You answered it. So, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, yep.
Is your concern more about them tacking on to the existing zoning?
Well, I think, I don't want to speak ill of anybody, but I think Wayne talked about the fact that this has been an expensive process, all right? So, so Kay and I have been developing a limited liability corporation. After all this time, we don't even own our homes any longer, okay? This limited liability corporation owns our home, but they're ultimately going to be turned over to the nonprofit that we are creating, okay? And then we're also doing a conservation easement, and then we've, we've had to deal with the Historic Preservation Commission, because they didn't like some of the designs that we came up with, because it turns out that that part of the block unbeknownst to us is actually part of the historic district, all right? And so we had to accommodate that. There's been costs associated with all of this. I mean, we're just, you know, we're pouring money out of our pockets all the time here and so forth, and now to have somebody come in and say, "Oh, I'm doing business as usual, and I'm going to create these rental properties, but, you know, like this ain't going to cost me a dime, because, hey, I'm part of this, you know, green-washed, you know, Holly Hamlet thing," and so forth. That's how it strikes us, all right? It isn't that we want to be uncooperative, and, and like I said, you heard me say in my testimony, that if they will devote one of the, of the eight units to garden space, I'll smile, all right? But we have a model here where we're saying, "Oh, we got a housing crisis, and we've got to be able to, you know, supply housing for all these people." Well, true, okay, but if you put them there, and particularly if they are people who are not wealthy and so forth, what are they going to eat? And the whole notion that, "Oh, we'll send them all off to a community garden." I've been working on community gardens for 13 years in this city. What community gardens? We don't have them. There's no water to them. It's so complex, so let's start putting gardens where people live, and I'm wearing out your patience, so.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Kay, did you want to say something?
Yeah, you're welcome to say.
Hi, I'm Kay Walter. I live at 605 North 26th Street. I just want to back up what Tim has said. I also want to say that I haven't seen the actual designs yet, but we would really like them to fit in with the neighborhood, which is a historic preservation area. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask you a quick question? I just want to clarify, so the current CUP, you, Tim mentioned the, you know, the LLC and, and some of the other things that have been going on as part of this process.
Right.
Am I correct in saying that you currently own all the property in this CUP?
All of them, except the one that we sold to... All of them, except the one that we sold to NeighborWorks so that they could develop that corner lot.
Got it. And NeighborWorks owns that property currently.
Right. That's right. And for full disclosure, I'm on the NeighborWorks board, and Desiree might be, Desiree is also on it, so, yep.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification.
Could I clarify one point? We don't all, own all of 645. We bought it all originally in April of 2020, but this past December, we sold the parcels that the three houses will sit on, but we own the garden space, and we, and that will be added to the conservation easement, which means that after Tim and Kay are ghosts and we're out there in the ether somewhere and so forth, the neighbors will still be able to eat nutritious, substantial food.
Is there additional testimon, additional testimony in opposition? All right. Staff questions? Dick, go ahead.
Ben, were you aware of the Hamlet, Holly, Holly Hamlet, and how it may or may not relate to this proposal?
Yes, I, I worked on the Holly Corners CUP as well, so I'm familiar with that CUP. In relation to the code, you don't, anyone can add on to a PUD or a community unit plan with the request, so if you're on the boundary and you own the property, you can submit to add on to that special permit.
Is there any requirement that they follow the same mandates that have been set up originally in that CUP?
There weren't any requirements set within the CUP, so they requested the waivers for things like their front yard and side yard setbacks to do the smaller lots, lot area minimums, but there wasn't any requirement to provide, for example, space for gardening. So they built that into their outlot, but a lot of times the CUPs are going to be your waivers from the zoning code requirements from that.
So, just to clarify, this is the way, this is an appropriate way that can happen in the City of Lincoln?
Correct.
Okay.
If this lot was not added, how would the design plans need to change?
Yeah, so if this wasn't in the CUP, it's zoned R6, so they could, multifamily is permitted by right, so they would have to meet the setbacks, but off the lot size, they could do up to at least 12 multifamily units on the lot by right.
But with different setbacks?
Correct. They would have increased setback.
Other questions for Ben? I guess not. Okay. Thank you. All right. Applicant rebuttal.
My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Rambolt-Ludkey. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, who's also, you heard from a little bit earlier. A few comments to make in, make in rebuttal to address the comments that were made, was first to applaud the concept that NeighborWorks and this, this neighborhood has worked to develop with their currently existing CUP. I mean, the concept of being able to build single-family homes with a garden next to it is laudable. It's a fantastic concept. You know, that said, that concept was put in place, and I think if I look at the staff report, that concept was approved in January of this year. The applicant in this case only acquired this property about three months ago. And so what that means is to the extent of participating in the original CUP was that this project didn't become feasible in its form until after there was a CUP, until after that CUP was approved. More than that, as staff commented too, that yes, there is a process for extending the CUP, and what that extension allows us to do is it gives us a tool to ask to obtain those waivers that make this, this style of housing possible, that, that, I, I would comment that as, reiterate the point, that, and this R6 zoning, like was mentioned, that instead of doing eight, really row home, eight row home units, if we aren't able to work out that concept, what, what is allowable is a 12-unit apartment complex, but in working with the city, the applicant decided that that didn't fit as well the character of this neighborhood and moved to this lower density, you know, this really missing middle density development, to really try and strike that balance between providing more housing to the neighborhood, but also trying to keep within the character of the neighborhood. And so finally, what I wanna reiterate is that Lincoln needs housing, like every community in the country. Lincoln needs housing. And so this is the concept, this is the way that as developers working with the City of Lincoln and within the current regulations in the City of Lincoln, to try to meet that need, that need for additional housing in Lincoln, but also to try and not completely change the character and move to that more multifamily style of housing. So with that, I appreciate your comments, appreciate your consideration. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Also, as you're aware, Aaron Bird with the applicant is with me here, too. Yes, go ahead.
Did you have any meetings with the neighborhood? Any outreach to the neighborhood?
I would let Mr. Bird correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe there have been any meetings with the neighborhood. I do know that there will be ongoing process as a part of this, as this says, as the application said, there have been discussions with urban development. We anticipate the tax increment financing might be a part of this, so there will be ongoing discussions.
Did the person that was just talking about attaching to the CUP that they did, what do you think about the idea of having one of the units become garden for your seven units?
I think that that would have a significant impact on the feasibility of the project. This is only an eight-unit development. To remove one of those units, when we've already found ways to make it work with eight units instead of 12, to remove another unit would really have a significant impact on feasibility. Okay, thank you.
Is the target, given the location and the size, college, university students, renters, four bedrooms, so just thinking, we've had this conversation before, when people build a four-bedroom unit, that it's not two cars, it's four cars, and a lot of turnover.
I'd say in this case, note that it is two cars. There's the, the two-car garages that will be built. And that this, these are being built to serve the area. Will there be students that live there? Probably, I would say, but it's built to serve whoever wants to live in this area.
It would be great if they wanted to live in the neighborhood where they could have access to fresh honey and birds and...
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dick?
Anne, I, I noticed in the back, in the, what I'd call an alley, but to the, go to the garages, that there is not any distance behind the garages that would allow an additional car or two, even if they were turned sideways. Is there any way to adapt, to have a better distance between the garage door?
So you're talking about on the site plan and really the driveway that's between the two buildings and whether the width is going to allow additional parking? Let's see, I will let our applicant, Aaron, speak to that. I would say my assumption, if he can confirm that, is that this is a really tight site, that we're already, need those waivers of setbacks to be able to make this site work, so I'd be surprised if we could.
The, the throat or the drive aisle that will feed the garages coming from North 26th Street is a size to accommodate traffic in both directions. It is also where the L T U and also the civil engineering with all the utilities and infrastructure is going to run through. So if you adjust some of that, you are going to be, one, affecting the dwellings, because you're going to have to reduce, the size has to come out somewhere, so, no.
So you are saying that the, the driveway, there'll be no more vying access, right? The driveways and that, so...
Part of the, correct.
So they'll just, the only way in or out will be on 26th?
Correct.
So cars will just back out and turn, there's not a turnaround?
It's, it was a good question, because orig, the original concept, the drive aisle in between the two garages was, code is 24 feet, to allow cars one way and another. I said that's going to be problematic, so let's adjust that and grow that aisle in size to where now it's up to 30 feet in certain areas, to where a car can back out and turn around, and they're always going forward and not backing out of the aisle for that reason.
Other questions?
We may have answered this earlier, but, and this might not, might be for you or the staff, I'm not sure, but I know we're kind of approving the CUP expansion, but then also this plan, but, I mean, is this plan truly final, or there could be some changes still to this plan?
There is a final plat that has been submitted. Riga in, in civil engineering has gone through the dwelling and the old, there was an old garage that was on the southern part of it, has been removed in order to do a final plat. And so that, so everything's based on this final plat, this layout, and what so forth, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yose?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed.
And with your permission, Cindy, after I make a motion, I'd like to explain. I would move to approve special permit 22045A.
Hold on. Is there a second? Second, Joy. Okay, go ahead.
My, my reasoning behind this is, although I think that it would be nice to have the additional garden and, and continue the, the progress that, that they've made on that entire block, and then now going to the block or the block north of it, but that property has been for sale for a long, long time, and it does have the right right now to put 16 apartments on there.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve? Okay. Anyway, it's more than the eight, more than the eight, whatever it is, but I think at least these will be eight individual units, and as much as I'd like to see the garden idea expand, I just, I don't see how we can control a property owner when our issues are zoning, and it is already zoned in that, in that situation. So I have to, as much as I have mixed emotions, I will be supporting the approval.
Gloria, go ahead.
I will not be supporting this. I think when we look at eight units at four bedrooms, if my math is correct, that's 32 bedrooms. These will be rented to college students. That's the history of what's been put in our neighborhoods time and time again on these four-bedroom units is for college students, which is against city code, if they're not related. If they're brothers and sisters, you're fine, but if they're not related. And so even 12 units, they're not gonna fit four 12 u, four...
Twelve four-bedroom.
Thank you. Four 12-bedroom units on that property, it's not big enough. If they wanted to put something in that met code with no waivers, that's their right to do so, but they're asking for waivers, and that's what we're looking at. Is this appropriate for this area with these waivers? Clinton Neighborhood, Butts, Holly, we're appreciative of all the, all the work you guys do, and we take notes from you on how to do it better in our neighborhood, and we've seen these units come in time and time again, and their four bedrooms run into four college students with four cars.
Lorenzo?
So, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Campbell. This is a hard one. You know, I'm a proponent of green space and definitely gardening, and I appreciate the community's efforts in, in doing that, and, and the work and time you spent on, on doing it. But on the other side of it, it's a bird in hand, right? I mean, we have a plan in front of us that has less units than the potentially that can be there, and it actually is in sort of the middle layer of housing, right, that we are looking for, you know, as a community. And while, just words of advice to the applicant, ideally, you wanna reach out to your, your community partners, right, especially when there's a community plan in place and work has been done to do it, to get agreement and alignment, and hopefully some input on the plan that you would put, you know, here. But overall, from a zoning perspective, it does make sense, and I'll be in agreement.
Other discussion? Rich?
Yeah, I love the Holly Hamlet and appreciate the work that Tim and Kay have done and others. And NeighborWorks is a tremendous organization that looks for homeownership and to establish neighborhoods because of the homeownership aspect of it, and I think that the, the gardening aspect is just brilliant. And NeighborWorks and, and these folks have done so much and have spent so much to develop this CUP, and now it's just being piggybacked on with no cost. I think I will be with Gloria, Commissioner Edens, and vote no on this, and hopefully can come with a compromise. And I understand that they can just take their ball and build 12 apartment buildings instead, and hopefully if they do, they will put some garden space in there, but that's not for us to, to dictate. But, no, for the reasons I just gave, I, I'm going to vote against.
Other discussion?
I just have one follow-up. We didn't ask the developer on how much he planned to charge, but I don't, I don't know what the missing middle, what that dollar figure looks like. I just know in my area, these are running for $2,000 apiece at least. I don't think that necessarily fits in the missing middle, but maybe that is, maybe my price point is lower than most.
Other comments?
Um, I, I'll just say that, I mean, it, it really seems like it was the perfect storm. Certainly, there's, I appreciate the clarification that it's, it's certainly within the purview of someone adjacent to a CUP to have the opportunity to expand that once it is established. And with a new property owner coming in and not necessarily knowing the history and having the opportunity to have seen the work that went into that, certainly there's that, just that disconnect. I'm, I'm, I am very disappointed that with, with our involvement, the planning department's involvement with what happened in putting together the original CUP, I am disappointed that there wasn't a conversation to engage with those folks who worked really diligently over the last three years to put that into place and to do all of that work. Yes, I know it's not required, but it certainly could have happened and made this not be the surprise that it was for the neighborhood, and there, there really could have been more conversation along the way. And so that, that disappoints me. But again, a perfect storm of, of new folks and, and lots of things going on, I'm, I really am torn. I, at this point, I am going to vote not to expand the CUP. I, I understand that there are 12 that are allowed by right, but without the waivers that are being requested, and I do think that there's opportunity to work on this further and, and bring forth something that will really work with the neighborhood.
I'm going to be supporting the motion based on the similar discussion that Commissioner Campbell indicated... Campbell indicated with the purview of what we have in place in the city with being able to expand CUPs and, but with the process that hopefully is coming up with urban design and some of those aspects and hearing that there's opportunity to have discussion and jump in with the neighbors and talk with them, I'm hoping that some of that can be remedied. But again, I also agree with my fellow commissioners that we've missed some opportunities here and we would really love if to, for you to engage in the neighborhood in that aspect.
Anyone else?
I will also not be voting in support. I understand that it is possible to add on, but it's not required to do that and it doesn't seem like a great fit to me. And I think 12 apartments, but with some green space may actually fit better within the neighborhood and have more variety of options for housing than, so I will be voting to deny.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Edens?
No.
Ederton?
No.
Fight?
No.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
No.
Reiman Yost?
No.
Motion failed, six to three.
We need a motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
I move to deny special permit 22045A.
Second, Fight? Shelley?
Ball?
This is voting in favor of a motion to deny if you vote yes.
So it's no.
No, is it, yeah?
Thank you. You saw the wheels turn there. No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
No.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to two. Next item for a public hearing is item 3.1, change of zone 21020A to men's, the south of downtown planned unit development, PUD, with addition of sub-area one within the PUD to allow for redevelopment project, including up to 9,200 square feet of commercial space and 125 multifamily dwelling units on property zone B3 business district and R7 residential district, PUD, with associated waivers on property generally located at 1,000 South 13th Street. I will note that everyone should have, Commissioner should receive a staff memo dated 10/2/23 identifying revisions to the staff report and conditions of approval as agreed upon by staff and applicant. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information learned while visiting any of the site to be disclosed?
No.
Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, 68508. This is an amendment to the south of downtown planned unit development. This PUD was approved in 2021. And includes, I believe, 44 acres just south of downtown Lincoln. And with this amendment today, they are proposing, so you can see the larger black line outlines the entire PUD, so it is quite large, and this area between D and E Streets along South 13th is the project area. And they will be submitting this amendment and within the staff report as sub-area one. So that would be basically attached to the PUD and the waivers, any permitted uses, that's only going to relate just to the project area and not the entire PUD. A little background on this PUD was set up a little differently than our common PUD. We'd see it come through, so it broke it into different areas as it gets further from downtown, but you have downtown transitional district and then mixed use is the blue. This area actually sits right on both, so there's the northern properties within that transitional district and the southern portion of the properties and the mixed use. So a little bit on the site, to the south, so to the east, south and portion to the west is all zoned R7 residential. And then across the street would be B3 commercial, which is the Casey's gas station on the corner. The applicant is proposing the sub-area one to allow a multifamily building, mixed use, so it would allow up to, up to 125 dwelling units and then 9,200 square feet of commercial space. With this, they are requesting multiple waivers related to the setbacks. Many of these are going to be because this area on the corner is zone B3 and then the remainder of the site is zoned R7. So you're working with two different zoning district setbacks. So we're treating it as one within sub-area one and that their building is proposed to be along South 13th Street and then the portion on D and E Streets. They did request additional waivers to the height as they are proposing a five-story multifamily. The applicant can give more information on the details, but they, within their parking would be on the main level with the corner being their commercial space and then the multifamily building would be above. One portion here is that the alley currently running east and west would be vacated in the future and then a common access easement would be placed over that, so it'd still be open to serve the public east-west, so traffic would not be stopped. But the reason for that is because the building on the second level and above will actually extend over the alley and connect as one structure. On the waivers, they also requested a waiver to reduce the required parking on site. They are going from one parking space per unit to .6 and proposing 91 onsite parking, so that would be a mix with the commercial and then the proposed dwelling units. Compatibility with the site plan when looking at this project, it is compatible with many of the goals in the comprehensive plan. It's an infill, affordable housing project within the near downtown area. They would be adding additional commercial space, which in the PUD encouraged that mixed use development. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions at this time?
Yeah. Ben, can you help me with what is adjacent right up against that sub-area? Are these apartment buildings already? There are quite a bit of parking, so I-
Correct, yeah, that'd be R7 to the east and multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there was a neighborhood meeting, correct? Was there anything that came out of that that has been addressed in this proposal?
Yeah, could address, I know a lot of the discussion, which I should have mentioned, has been with some of the on-street parking. So they are showing some additional parking on D Street, South 13th. Originally, when we started the discussion, there was parking shown on both sides of D and E and South 13th. So that was some of working with the meeting feedback and as well as the developer, LTO, on what the appropriate amount of on-street parking. It's important to note that this is being added from, as, from the applicant, but is not being considered into the parking requirement. So these are going to be public spaces open to the neighborhood, which to my knowledge the neighborhood was in support of getting more parking spaces within that area.
Would the-
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Would, would the business owners on the first floor be able to put up a sign that says you can only park here if you're getting your hair cut here, kind of thing?
No, it'd be strictly public, so, and that was part of the discussion, is that they wouldn't be able to, to use it as a private spot.
Do you know the number of parking spaces they're gaining on-street parking?
Yes, I believe it's 19 spaces.
And the 19 spaces are not included in the count of the project?
They're not, they'll be adding, so the 91 spaces would be on their property.
On their property, okay.
There's, there's really zero open space, correct?
So they're adding, they did ask for a waiver from open space. With the developer, they could speak a little more on the actual design, but they are adding to rooftop public areas, so they kind of serve as rooftop decks for the residents of the building, which we did feel with it being more of a dense infill in the downtown areas, one way to, to still get open space within a building.
And, and this might be the developer question, do you know how large the rooftop decks are? I just can't remember.
Probably in there. I had it in my viewers here.
Thought I remembered it in the presentation.
They're proposing, so it'd be roughly from the site plan we've been working with them on would be 5,500 square feet split between two different decks on the second levels.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's all for now. Thanks, Ben. Applicant, testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon. Planning Commissioners Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, attorney for the Developer Hoppingson LLC. As you see, we've got a full group from the development team here. We've got Mike Eckert, Civil Design Group, Jake Hoppie and Ben Kootz with the developers, Jay Palou with Ale Pointer, Karina McCormick, member of the South of Downtown Community Development Organization. So with this, you know, great list of people behind me, I won't spend too long up here talking, but broadly discussing, I wanted to just broadly discuss the project and this PUD amendment. Again, developer seeking amendment to the south of downtown PUD to facilitate the development of this project, roughly 125 affordable housing units, approximately 9,200 square feet of commercial space that's going to be used as a nonprofit medical clinic or some similar facility. Again, the idea being to provide services that are helpful to this area and this community. It fits really well within the comprehensive plan and the general intent of the existing PUD that's being amended. Affordable housing, mixed use, infill project. And, and again, the reason for those, for the waivers that are being requested in this space is to make a difficult project like this work in that area. As already mentioned, this fits in really well with the comprehensive plan. We're developing safe, affordable, accessible, affordable housing, about 125 units, reusing an infill site that needs renovation, providing compatible uses in that neighborhood, which will be beneficial to the residents and to the neighborhood. Housing along the bus route close to downtown and again, just a significant investment in the south of downtown area. For the PUD itself, again, according to, you know, the zoning regulations for planned unit developments, the planned unit development districts intended to provide a mechanism to permit flexibility in private or public development or redevelopment areas throughout the city. Specifically, the PUD is intended to, among other things, be used to permit flexibility in the regulation of land use development, encourage innovation in land use, variety in design layout and type of construction, and encourage economy and efficiency in land use. This sub-area one would do exactly that. It allows for flexibility in the zoning that's needed for this project, a project like this to work. And again, as already mentioned by Mr. Callahan, because it's sub-area one, the waivers really only apply to that specific area of the overall PUD. So it really is designed to make this project work and, and to be flexible, but not any more broad or expansive than necessary. The current PUD itself also includes the following guiding principles. Do you know, its purpose is to facilitate a better balance of uses that fit the urban scale and predominantly residential character of the neighborhood, with the intent of effectively meeting the needs of the residents and business owners alike, to encourage the establishment of pedestrian-oriented, community-centric spaces that activate the neighborhood, increase social participation, improve community safety and pride, support an increase in private investment in innovative development solutions in the neighborhood while maintaining affordable housing options, and to encourage affordable residential infill. So again, our, the, the proposed amendment to the PUD does just that. The requested waivers, again, really are meant to utilize this site and, and make this specific sub-area one, this project work in that area. I can talk more about those waivers, but again, I think, and I'm here, and I'm happy to answer your questions, but I'm also happy to wait and answer them after you've heard from everybody else, who are going to be able to answer a lot of the questions. The other thing I'd mention is, as far as this project goes, this is, this is a necessary step and step one in this, in a, in a very long and complex process of approvals. You'll see, there, there will be tax increment financing proposed for this project, so the redevelopment plan amendment will be coming back before the planning commission, I believe it's on the 18th. So this will not be the last time you see this project. Again, in addition to, and we'll talk more about it in addition to meetings that have happened and, you know, Urban Design Committee, City Council, so there's a lot of approvals to get through. But this is, you know, an important step one and I'm happy to answer your questions or again, I'm happy to wait till the end after you've heard from everybody else and answer them then.
I think go ahead and let's keep moving.
Thank you.
Yep. We can come back and ask questions.
But I'm like, you're already four minutes in.
Yes, good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska. Happy to be in front of you with this project. I am tasked with the site civil elements. Ben did hit on those. And I will go into a few more items related to it. Going back to the rideaway vacation, staff worked with us on that. There's a sanitary sewer that does run down this alley and all the subsequent alleys east and west and we, there was no really option to reroute it. So we're going to keep access through it, we're going to keep a easement on it for the city. It'll have a tunnel effect in that area. The agreement is that Hoppingsons will maintain that area as well as we will commit it to maintaining the rest of the alley, so the city essentially doesn't have to deal with it anymore. When we replat the multiple lots into one lot, we'll put an easement over it for that public access and as well as the utility easements. This is a view of the main level with the parking, with the commercial facility. And so, as you mentioned, the other thing that was discussed quite extensively with staff was the on-street parking. We had on-street parking in every side of E and D that we were proposing to put in and pay for, but we also desired to have the use of it exclusively. So modifications were made. This is where we're at with the stalls we'll add here and here and here, primarily to serve the commercial area. This is projected to be with the clinic with a heart. And so the very last sentence in our sub-area plan says we reserve the right to work with the city to do signage on those stalls that say, for example, between 3:00 and 7:00 PM, it'll be limited to two-hour parking. So at least there may be some cycling. Our client's going to continue to endeavor to find more stalls in other locations, but it was a balance we needed to strike between city staff and the neighborhood feedback. The trees that are in circles here will stay. We worked extensively with planning staff on that too, on what would stay and what would go. We're taking access to one parking area here and the other parking area here because they are not connected crossing the alley. We didn't want to do that, so there's no pedestrian interference with vehicles. And everything on 13th stays the same with the bus stop, the bike lane. And those are probably the major overview items of the site civil package that we will put in this program. So I too will be here to answer questions when everybody's done. That's probably the best way to do it, so.
So you're adding, oh, you want them all at the end? On that, you're adding handicap spots on 13th, is that on the top left? Is that what those are?
That's the plan, correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted-
We wanted to get a couple of those in as close to the commercial areas we could.
I appreciate that.
Jake Hoppie, 301 South 57th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, part of the development team. This has been a long time coming. It's been a great collaboration of trying to figure out what we can do with the site that I think in our minds and in the South of Downtown, South of Downtown Community Development Organization's minds, we're somewhat the stewards of trying to bring something forward that met a lot of the precedent planning that had been done and the prompts that we had been given. On this slide here, I won't go through everything on the top. I wanted to give- On this slide here, I won't go through everything on the top. I wanted to give some sense of just how much work has been done before we even got involved, back to 2016, of trying to examine what could be done in the South of Downtown area that would catalyze investment and serve the neighborhood. That sort of, we got involved in 2022 in partnership with the South of Downtown to apply for some of the ARPA resources that were being made available, specific to kind of catalyze projects of this sort. We were successful in a couple of applications, one for the affordable housing component of this project, and then one to support Clinic With A Heart for moving into the project and utilizing the commercial space. Clinic With A Heart is a nonprofit, free clinic that serves many folks in the neighborhood that was in sort of a substandard location and limited in its services it could provide based on the location that it had. From sort of 2022 on, we've been engaged in a variety of ways in the neighborhood, starting from some very basic polling and discussion and survey work being done in the first quarter, which informed a lot of the conceptual work that we did. There was a resident advisory board comprised of renters in the community that we were, kept updated on our plans and received feedback from, of course, at the South of Downtown itself, the board there, as well as, you know, everything kind of culminating in a community meeting on September 7th. A lot of the key themes that we responded to were just a true desire for substantial affordable housing creation, desire for the neighborhood's supportive services, and a lot of desire for the concept of integrating Clinic With A Heart. Safety and onsite management, so making sure that this kind of enhanced the safety of the balance of the neighborhood, and also had kind of a responsive management model that would be available and onsite. A lack of gathering spaces, and so a lot of the architectural prompt that we provided was around how do we present something that not only serves the development itself, but also might be considered kind of a front porch to the neighborhood or a space that's broadly utilizable. Neighborhood parking and trees and green space was an area that we went back and forth on, as you saw in some of the plans. We, in our initial conceptions, were responding to a lot of precedent prompts that were around the deficit of parking in the neighborhood, and so we were proposing a lot of parking. In refinement and in discussion with the neighborhood, you know, there was much more desire to preserve some of the green space. It was an area that, you know, we felt like we could accommodate. Parking will be a challenge. Clinic is an unusual use. We're looking at alternative ways of meeting their clinic requirements. They have a, you know, sort of a specific model that they use that's a little parking intensive, but we're working with them on sort of non-built ways to meet that need. Just wanted to talk about the affordable housing component. So we anticipate combining the ARPA funds with the 4% tax credit bond program administered by NIFA. So the entirety of this project will serve families that are 60% median income and below, and then we're looking to serve in an additional number of units serving those at 40% median income and below as well. So I just tossed up kind of what those numbers generally look like. You know, there is a lot of desire to try and increase the affordability, and we've tried to be responsive to that in collaboration with South of Downtown, and we'll continue to work forward with that. And then it's a 45-year affordability program, so this is going to be, as far as, I mean, even, certainly, I just, some of you may have seen or know Fred, certainly Fred's lifetime, it will be all affordable, probably my lifetime as well. And then we'll be pursuing TIF through the City of Lincoln, so the next thing you'll see, I think, before this body is an amendment to the redevelopment plan incorporating the project. The architecture is beautiful, so I'll sort of stop talking about this component and turn it over to Ben, who is better able to talk about some of the amenities and features.
Ben Coons, Hoppie Development, 5631 South 48th Street. And so Jake has alluded to this process that we've gone through with several neighborhood organizations, and kind of what we've come to as a result of that process is a project that delivers 125 affordable apartment homes, delivers 6,500 square foot of new space on ground floor for Clinic With A Heart, and also provides a significant amount of secured parking on the ground floor as well as an on-street parking strategy. We feel this is really a scale that's well-suited to multiple property managers, such that there's a full-time presence, something we think is very important for safety and supervision of the area, particularly as it relates to some of the project improvements. It's a project that will deliver, you know, modern accessibility standards, as well as a building with an elevator, in a neighborhood with a lot of aging housing that may or may not meet some of those requirements. Some of the design-level considerations we're extremely committed to is this idea of breaking this building into what appears to be three different buildings. Something we're not committed to yet is, for example, does one of the buildings get painted black? Does one of them get painted white or gray? You know, that's something that's still being worked out. The design is not 100% complete. Another thing we are committed to is the idea of bringing in materials that we can reference in the neighborhood. You can see the lead building here is brick. It's probably something we'll look to the neighborhood to define, that brick palette. Similarly, you know, these other structures perhaps are lap siding or another kind of similar material common in the neighborhood. But how those get detailed and applied and colored are yet to be determined. Secondly, you can see some pops of color on this rendering. These are, to be clear, these are just placeholders, but we are committed to a public art process and utilizing this project as a platform for public art. But what that art is and how it's incorporated is another thing that's still to be determined. And those are things that are going to continue to be happening over the course of this fall and winter. Getting a little more detailed on a few of the features. There's several community spaces that kind of grew out of the feedback we received from the various studies and interactions with the neighbors. Several of these spaces are the kind of community plaza space we're proposing here out front. This kind of accesses the front door to the building. Just beyond that, you can see this kind of in the corner of the building here, would be a community room, open and reservable to neighbors as well as residents. And you can see here, we were committed to a mobile vendor infrastructure set, whether that's a food truck or perhaps a mobile health partner for the clinic. And then extending off to the right of this image is what we're calling the linear park. What you're seeing here is just, again, kind of placeholders. What actually goes there is not determined yet. And then more at the kind of resident level, just beyond this community room, centrally located and would have a view of all this space, would be the building manager's office. And then up to the right would be a resident roof deck on the second floor. And then this kind of all taken together is kind of what we're calling a front porch concept. So we're very committed to those elements. What we are not committed to yet and are still exploring what the best is with the neighbors is, you know, what kind of activities to plan for in those spaces and what, you know, specific improvements to construct to support those activities. So, thank you.
Questions? Yeah.
Bicycle parking accommodations, are they in the plans?
Yes, we have, let me go back to this plan. So I guess maybe twofold. We would plan on public bike parking proximate to this community plaza, but for residents, we have a secured and screened parking area on the first floor of the building. We would also include bike lockers within that for residents.
Nice.
Thank you.
I'm going to hand it off to Jay, the architect from Ale Pointer.
Jay Palu, architect, Ale Pointer, McKetto Architecture, Omaha, Nebraska, 1516 Cummings Street. We've been engaged for a while now with Hoppie Development on the development of the plans. Master planning, site planning, we have other experts who can talk through that. I think what I'll focus on is a high level of the architectural approach. So we do have a podium that will protect the upper floor residents from the first floor activities, common to buildings of this type and scale in Lincoln, Nebraska, fire separation between the two. The nice thing about a building of this type, and I iterate this as we have 30 years of working in the affordable housing space, senior housing, market rate housing, is this building will meet all standards required by the City of Lincoln for market rate housing, but because of the funding source that Hoppie Development is taking on and their partners, we will meet some additional standards. So this housing will kind of exceed the quality levels in a lot of regards because of the funding sources they have. We have to build for durability, obviously for, for the long haul when they're committed to that. I think additionally, the building itself, I think it's a very unique approach to the site design. And there are easier ways to build this building. There are geometry that makes it a lot simpler, a lot less corners. So I think in the conversations we had with the development team, and then I think they were reinforced with the neighborhood, ranking the building up into pieces, although not the easy route, I think makes a lot of sense in this case. All floors will be accessible, the clinic obviously, or the commercial tenant space will be accessible. And then we'll also meet, obviously, fair housing, which is a strong suit of all housing built today. If there are any specific questions about those aspects, I can take them. Otherwise, I'm going to defer to others.
Thank you.
Hi, my, my name is Karina McCormick. I live at 1502 East Street, which, if you do the math, is really close to the project site that we're talking about. Furthermore, I actually previously lived on the block, what is it? I can't see.
It'll come up.
Okay. For about six years, I lived right here. So I'm actually quite
There we go.
Right, right here. So I'm actually quite familiar, eerily familiar with this specific block. I'm here because I am the president of the South of Downtown Community Development Organization, which for about one more week owns this property. On Friday, after a long extensive process, last Friday, we vote, or Thursday, we voted unanimously as a board to move forward with the sale to the Hoppies. And part of why we voted unanimously on that is the, we appreciated the responsiveness that we've had with the Hoppies and this project. And also, we felt confident because we have done so much community engagement and outreach on this project. Here, I don't need this for now. You can show me. The, so we actually developed an entire resident advisory board. That was 10 residents, and they were compensated for their time and in a really in-depth way. They gave insights on what this neighborhood needs, and they really emphasized safety and affordability. And this project includes both of those things, so they were excited that the parking area is secure and that the building was secure. That was something they really emphasized. And they really want it to be affordable. And I know that the biggest debate among all this is going to be how many units there are. And what it really comes down to is the more units, the cheaper the rent. So South of Downtown has worked out in this agreement with the Hoppies that we are going to continue seeking either philanthropic gifts or specifically philanthropic financing with interest rates as high as they are. The current rates that Jake showed, if that's as good as we can get, we still want to move forward with the project, but we really want to bring some of the rent prices down. For example, either adding more units that are at 40% AMI or adding another tier of units that's at 50% AMI, so taking out some of those 60% AMI units and making them instead 50%. Because we, right now with the project, even at 125, there's 10% of the units that are at 40% and 60% of the units, or no, the remaining 90% of the units are at 60% AMI. I actually do have a PhD in quantitative data analysis, so that's what it takes to understand AMI. We're in trouble, but yeah. So unless someone wants to give us several million dollars to reduce the number of units while also keeping affordability low, we'd really like to move forward with the 125. And that was specifically what the resident advisory board really emphasized. Something that hasn't been emphasized, and actually probably you don't care about, but something that is one of the best things about this project is the Hoppies have agreed to accept Section 8 vouchers in all units. And so that, for me, is what made me accept the $1,000 rent, is that people won't be paying necessarily a $1,000 rent out of pocket, that they'll accept the Section 8 vouchers. So, so that itself is huge. Many people testified at the legislature last year, including myself, to try to get the legislature to pass a statewide Source of Income Discrimination bill, but it didn't make it out of committee. So until that happens, it's really important that we support developers like the Hoppies who don't discriminate based on source of income. But yeah, the resident advisory board really liked this project. They, they liked a lot about it. Side note, it's actually, it was actually my idea to call it center terrace, because I really liked the terrace idea. I thought that was really beautiful, and with the amount of traffic that we have in the neighborhood, I thought it would be a nice place to have kids come and play. Again, we really want to keep the number of units at the, up to 25, 125 level, even though we got $6 million in ARPA funding when we apply, well, we, all of, you know, that, when we applied, $6 million doesn't go as far as it used to. And so we're really trying to make the most with what we have, and we appreciate the challenges that they have been, gone through in this weird zoning situation to make something that's really going to help the neighborhood. All right. So I think I'm the last, oh, Wayne. Okay. Are you coming up?
Hello again. Commissioners Wayne Mortensen, 2530 Q Street, testifying today in my role as the third-party manager of the South of Downtown.
Question.
Yes.
Are you speaking as a part of the applicant?
Yes.
Because we haven't moved on to public testimony.
Yep.
So I'm just trying to make sure this is all testimony on behalf of the applicant.
Yep. We are the third-party manager of the South of Downtown, and just wanted to clarify that the board, and really back up everything Karina said, and I'll be brief. The board originally decided to buy this site in November of 2021 to affect the disposition and create as good a project as they could achieve. No offense to those project types, but they did not want a self-storage or car wash facility showing up in the middle of their neighborhood. And so this is the product of that process. We signed, Louie, the CDO, signed a purchase agreement with the Hoppie team in September of 2022, pending successful resolution of the due diligence process, which is what you're seeing today. The NeighborWorks team facilitated that six-month community outreach and engagement process. Happy to answer any questions about who was involved in that. In addition to the resident advisory board, there were multiple focus groups and drop-in focus centers at F Street Community Center, outside Casey's, at the Gathering Place. Engagement in the South of Downtown is a very informal and organic thing because of the resident base that is there. That culminated in the public forum at the F Street Community Center on September 6th, and it is our appraisal, that of the CDO, that all of that feedback was received and incorporated into what you're seeing today. Just a clarification that you would be approving up to 125 units. That could still go lower based on some of the things that Karina just mentioned, and those 19 street parking spaces, which we hope would be two-hour commercial parking to better serve that not-for-profit health clinic. The board approved unanimously the transfer of the requisite land during their 9/28 meeting, September 28th, and the CDO will continue to focus on five things as the project moves forward. One is the project affordability, as Karina just mentioned. Two are resolution of the architectural details, so the project is compatible with the district in which it's being built. Three is green space enhancement, those plazas, how we can maximize the enjoyment and use of those areas. of those areas for public art incorporation, making sure that's a meaningful opportunity for the community. And five is the services provided by the health clinic, as well as the programming that happens in that building for the betterment of the community. The last thing I'll say is that the South of Downtown is supportive of today's request and is excited to achieve an infill residential project of this quality and scale with zero displacement. There is nobody that's going to be actively displaced by the construction of this project. Thank you for your time.
All right. I have a question for someone perhaps from the CDO, whether it's Wayne or you. What was the general feedback about either the open space, you know, waiving the open space requirement and the ideas of the green space and the information that was presented to us about how that will be incorporated into the building itself?
Yeah. That's a great question. It reminds me, I wanted to clarify something that I think the staff said. So, by the time we had the forum on September 6th, we had already pulled back on one of the original plans with a lot of parking. So, we wanted by the forum to get it as close as we thought and then just, you know, to really propose it as a yes or no thing to the residents. So, that, so originally, they wanted to have lots of diagonal parking here and here, and that would have negatively affected even my life. So, I, we pulled it back to this, just right here, which importantly, I want to mention is only attached to either the property that we have and also the commercial area. And specifically, I want to point out, Jeff here behind me, I went over to his porch and had a conversation, and one of the original plans had parking right here, and here's his house. And so, after I met with him, I sent an email and said, "Guys, we need to leave this green space for Jeff." I really did that. I don't know if I told you that. But we took a tour, and that's how I actually organized South of Downtown board members to meet onsite. We looked around at the green space, tried to see how we could maximize keeping the trees. Shade has been something that people have really emphasized. So, we, it's incredible how much thought we've put into each tree on the property. But yeah, I like the terrace idea. If we get extra money, there is an idea to have, the original plan that we saw had a second terrace here, which I really like. So, we're hoping to actually still get enough money to do that, which would increase the amount of open space. But in this neighborhood, it would be much safer for kids to be playing in an area away from the street. Like, there was a gunman running around my block the other night. I couldn't do my laundry because the police said everyone had to stay in their building. You know what I mean? So, I really like the idea of this center terrace, the terrace areas as community. And then something also relevant is this right here is community garden owned by NeighborWorks. So, at least that is green. And then we did remove any parking on D Street. And as I'm sure you are very familiar, the D Street Greenway is really nice as well. So, we kept that as it was, in contrast to one of the earlier plans.
Thank you. That's helpful.
All right. Do you have other questions for the applicant at this time?
I do. Probably a question for Mr. Hoppie. You're three buildings in one, basically. Are you, you're going to do them all together, or is this going to be a phased-in project?
No, it's all technically one building. It has, by the way, we've broken it down, so it would be one building permit. It'll all go up together. We just tried to break it down so that from the street presence, it would, you know, it's not one huge monolith of a building. It appears like it's broken into three different.
So, it's all at once?
Yeah.
And you said onsite management of the building is anticipated?
Yes. So, building with 100, generally a building of 125 units and up, we can probably have two people onsite. It's something that we're starting to look at a lot more, just as we, there's a lot of cases where you might want two people going to a door. If you're evicting someone, you might want two people going to a door to have that conversation, or if there's an issue that's happening, it's always a little bit better to have two people onsite. So, being at this scale allows us to support with a management model that makes a little more sense, just in every project that we're doing, not specific to affordable housing.
Got it. Thank you.
Questions right now? All right. Thank you guys very much. All right. We'll move on to testimony in support. Anyone here testifying in support of this application? All right. Neutral te, oh, go ahead.
In support.
Okay.
Colby Watson, 640 South 12th. Lived in the neighborhood for a long time as a renter, not a homeowner. But, you know, the PUD is 90% renters, so maybe it counts for a little bit more than it typically would. And I'm just a few blocks away. I was a little, you know, worried when I went to the public outreach event recently because I was afraid it was going to be a strip mall with some condos on top and completely ill-suited to the socio-economic nature of the area and the surrounding area. But was pleasantly surprised that it wasn't that. Instead, it was, you know, a multifamily build with a health clinic. And a big part of the reason why I liked it as much as I did was that the commercial real estate portion is a health clinic. It sounds like that's largely dialed in, maybe still theoretical. I hope that that is how it plays out and it doesn't end up being an artisanal pizza, standing room-only, chapeau type thing, which is super cool, but maybe not the best fit in terms of adding commercial real estate into an area that's already exceptionally population-dense. I know the mixed-use thing is like the big priority, comes up so many times in the master plan and all of the other documents that are associated with that. But, you know, maybe it's not the right tool for every job. The Everett neighborhood or this portion that's in the PUD and that portion of the near south that's within it as well is already super population-dense. So, I hope that this is just one of many steps where development, redevelopment is primarily of the multifamily build, not necessarily incorporating more commercial real estate. You know, we've got essentially four schools on that latitude, so there's a lot of kids transiting east and west in the afternoon on weekdays. And I know congestion is always the big perennial complaint, but you know, there's like a terrifyingly terrific amount of traffic on 17th and 16th and 13th and 9th and 10th. So, you know, yeah. Multifamily, I think, is the right, right tool for the job, and I'm super excited about this project. I think it's a good project.
Thank you. Additional testimony in support? All right. Testimony in a neutral position or testimony in opposition?
My name is Jeff Hirsink. I live at 1045 South 13th, or as has been pointed out, across the street from this. I want to first of all say that I stand in absolute support of affordable housing and want to work towards that. I stand also in support of Clinic With A Heart being in our neighborhood and also have a great appreciation for Hoppie and the projects that they have done for those things. However, I stand in opposition to this. It's easy to think because I live across the street, that's my opposition. To be honest with you, that may be part of it. It's hard to not have some different views of this when you have a front porch that you're able to look out at, and now you're going to be building a wall directly across the street. However, I stand more in opposition because of my neighborhood. My neighborhood is often a unheard neighborhood. I find it actually interesting that the South of Downtown tells you that they've heard from this neighborhood because they set out to knock on 10,000 doors and never even got to 2,000 before they became more of a political activist group at some level, primarily being against renters, our landlords, I should say, it felt like, towards the end of their staff reign. And then they turn and become one of the greatest renter facilities or want to propose that to us with 125 units on five lots. I find that very interesting after being on the advisory board for South of Downtown, not the one that was compensated for some reason, but just one prior to COVID, and heard a lot of the different discussions. One of the big complaints that we heard over and over were the allowance of slip-ins, where once historic, beautiful homes from the original plotting of Lincoln were torn down to allow a slip-in. And the other complaint that we heard over and over was a lack of parking. And here, we're proposing 125 units, doubling the amount that a typical slip-in would have, and proposing to do that with limited parking when the prior proposal, there was a question about two parking spots per unit, and now we're going to less than one. So, I do find these things very troubling for a neighborhood that does have a tough time having its own voice when you're 90-some percent rental and when many of those even speak different languages. I think NeighborWorks has done their work to try to get that voice, but I voiced my opposition, and it seems to have gone nowhere. They speak of the forum that they held on September 6th, I believe. But regardless of the date, when we were brought into that meeting, they proposed this proposal and said, "Now, if you would like to talk about how we can save the few trees that are on this lot, you can go sit at this table. If you would like to talk about the art, you can sit at this table. If you would like to talk about a few different things, you can sit about this table." But there was never an opportunity for us to actually discuss or be opposed. And in fact, in my discussion with one of the staff members at the end of the meeting, somebody came up to the staff member and said, "Please quit chit-chatting and let's get to work and clean this place up." So, I stand in great opposition to what is happening here because I believe our neighborhood does deserve better. When South of Downtown started, one of the biggest intents that was identified was that we need more green space. As a father of four in this neighborhood, it is hard for your kids to have a place to play. Living on D Street, we finally put up a fence so that my kids could have a safe place to play. That being said, as was noted, 9th and 10th being main thoroughfares one-way, 16th and 17th literally block us off from every other green space. The alternative to that has been, we'll go to Everett. Everett used to have a play space, but then they put a track through there, then they tore that up, and for two years, they've been putting in a thermal field in their playground. So, there is not a place for our kids to play in this neighborhood. I understand that there is a need for affordable housing. I think we need to work towards that, but I do stand in opposition on behalf of this neighborhood for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? No, thank you. Any additional testimony? All right. Staff questions?
I think, I think there are additional testimonies.
Oh, okay.
Darlene Munt, 1035 Garfield. I have lived in this neighborhood for over 50 years. The original intent of this neighborhood was to have individual family homes, okay? And for decades, that is what the community has worked for. We originally had a duplex. That duplex has been and many others have been converted back to single-family dwellings. Affordable single-family dwellings in our neighborhood are much less expensive than the rent that people are going to be charged for these apartments. How do I know that? Because we have a six-plex that is next door to us, okay? The original builder took excellent care of it, but they now have a managing company who manages 59 units. You can imagine what a difference it is, okay? You cannot reach anybody. They do not take care of things. Emergency crews and police are there often, and that's a real concern of mine. I have a few notes here, and I just want to mention some things. One of the things I am really concerned with is the parking. The units next to us are one-bedroom apartments, okay? We, and they have four off-street parking behind their unit, we still have a street full of cars. Where do those people park, you know? I also volunteer and have in the past at Clinic With A Heart. Clinic With A Heart is only four blocks approximately from this location. Clinic With A Heart is not open during the day. Clinic With A Heart is open by appointment only in the evening. So, are they completely changing their availability and their resources? And can they truly take care of the people that are needed to be taken care of during the daytime hours? Because you know when everybody gets home from work where those cars are going to go if that Clinic With A Heart is in the evening. Schools, I'm sure a lot of these will have children. If you drive the neighborhood, first of all, you will see apartments for rent everywhere. You will see houses for sale. They sell fast. They sell, if they haven't been sold within a week, there's something wrong with it, okay? All of the schools are overcrowded. Everett just recently tore up everything in, well, we talked about the playground. That's where I, when I taught Sunday School, I even took kids over there to play. There's no, no place to take children to play. In addition, where do all the children from these apartments go to school? How do they get to school? Because they're going to be too close to actually probably get bussing. Police. My understanding is, and if you've driven around Lincoln, particularly downtown and in our neighborhood, you will find more red lights, more speeding, and more offenses because our traffic unit has been dispersed because we have a lack of police available. Who's going to take care of all of these people? And looking at the design, a couple of other thoughts I had, the alley that's going to be covered? What is going to keep transients from being in there? Where is the trash? What accommodations have been made? Imagine 125 homes. We have enough with a six-plex behind, next to us. 125 homes, where is all that trash going to be? I personally would much rather see in this area a park. I have preached that for years. We have, as mentioned, nowhere for neighborhood kids to play. Now, on the same, I know we need the housing, but take a, take a drive down 9th Street before you get to 77, there's a great park over there. Does anybody know about that park, Van Dorn Park? How many times have you seen anybody at that park? Never. Once in a great while, there'll be a birthday party. Let's move this unit over there. There's ample space. That space is not being used. It will not, there's ample parking, accessibility with the highways, and you're not taking away from the neighborhood and crowding. You know, I've lived, like I said, we have wonderful neighbors. On our street, we only have two rentals. The rest of them are owned. Of course, we're the oldest ones, okay? Our house will soon be 100 years old, but it was well taken care of. So, I am in opposition to this, and it's because there are so many concerns that have not been addressed. Oh, one last thing. The other thing, I had all of them, but I would like the board right here to vote, and I wanted to go on the record for the minutes. How many of you would vote to have this facility within a few blocks of your home? Raise your hand or say yes. Well, we're in the same state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Nothing? Nothing? We got nothing for Ben? All right. Thanks for standing up. You got to stretch your legs.
Thanks for standing up.
All right.
I don't know that we have any formal rebuttal. I mean, we've been balancing in this project a lot of different concerns. We've heard from many that the more affordable housing we can put here, the better, and I think if, on balance, they would seek more units. We've heard from many that the more green space we can preserve, the better. Been balancing a lot of different items on this project. I think what we have here is a transformative project and a really great investment that feels very. and a really great investment that feels very fortuitous with how it's come together between serving, you know, having the opportunity to have a place for the clinic that is responsive to the clinic's emerging needs. The, the current facility is no longer, it's not handicapped accessible, for instance. The ability of the clinic to serve in a more expansive way than neighborhood will be enhanced by its ability to move into this facility. We are very sensitive that this creates impacts in the neighborhood and we know that it does. And we're sorry that that is perceived negatively, any project at this scale will. And I think we always have to think about the voice of the folks who don't get to live in the neighborhood in an affordable unit and on a margin, make it as enhanced as possible. I mean, there's some, probably a conversation around the green space. This is not the final kind of iteration of, you know, we're, there, I think as reference, there were opportunities and continue to be opportunities for us to seek additional resources to enhance the space that we have. So I don't know if Karina or Ben, if you have any additional thoughts?
South of Downtown Community Development Organization was formed especially for this space to increase the quality of life for residents and increase the economic viability and also give people safe, affordable places to live and access to other quality of life issues such as healthcare. So we put out a, once we, over a course of years, finally got this property, which is a center, in a way, it is a center point, which is not an intentional pun, but it's such a focal point of the, of this area, which is the two highest poverty census tracts in Lincoln. That's what south of downtown covers exactly. So no, we don't want this on 70, by Highway 77. We specifically want it here. And we've put a lot of work into specifically putting it here. I, I don't remember what else I was, oh, for parking again. So this is a bus, oh. Just waiting. Well, anyways, there's a bus route that runs along 13th, which is actually the best bus route because everything goes straight to the area where all the routes meet. And also, it's very close to the trolley stop. The resident advisory board had the nice, had a really good idea. If the trolley could extend only two blocks down further, they could actually hit this like very closely. I, I thought that was a great idea. Okay, here's what I wanted to say. Her vote was, if you voted, would you want this in your neighborhood? Well, we did take people who lived in this neighborhood. We established the resident advisory board and we literally asked them, do you want this in your neighborhood? And they resoundingly said yes. The only caveat was, can you try to get the rents a little lower? Otherwise, yes. And then I clarified with them, do you still want this even if we can't get rents lower? And they resoundingly said yes, so.
I can speak to a few of the more technical items, such as how trash is being handled. This building will be served by a central trash chute, which will feed into this trash room interior to the structure located off of the alley, likely served by a trash compactor in order to minimize the space required for dumpsters and so forth. I don't remember all the other technical items. That's one that I recall having a good answer too quickly.
Any other quick again? I live on, in this neighborhood, I live on this block, two blocks away, and I want this in my neighborhood, so.
I guess the other thing was the kind of outdoor space and, you know, things along the linear park. Ideas we've collected so far include things like a splash park or possibly an edible forest or some other ideas along these kind of themes. We do hope, although this is on private ground, that it is something for the neighbors. So that's something that remains to be detailed in one of the feedback areas we hope to still incorporate.
Thank you. All right. Thanks very much.
I would move with close of public hearing.
Second, Joy. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederson?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
I would also move that we approve Change of Zone 21020A.
Second, Joy. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I think this is a well-put-together project. And it is serving a need in an area of our community that has that need. So having, with Hoppy's previous success with low-income housing, they've set a good example of what could be done and I will be supporting this.
I agree with my fellow commissioner, I'll be supporting this. I do like the out-of-the-box thinking for maybe something that doesn't need to set urban right next to the bus stops and hit all the goals and parts and pieces. So that's something maybe the mayor and the city council can take into account that maybe they could do some land swapping there. They're very forward-thinking on a lot of things they do. So I like that out-of-the-box thinking. I love, though, the roof terraces, getting the green space in this area in creative ways, looking at the urban park along the street concept. Those are really good urban density concepts. And from a land planning standpoint, I will be sporting this with all of those features.
I have to say, as someone who actually lived in the Everett neighborhood and owned property on Washington between 12th and 13th, I get it. There, literally, at the time, we had a child at Everett School and there's no place to play. There is no place, green space, to be able to kick the soccer ball around. There, just, you know, biking is taking your life into your own hands because you're on some of the busiest streets in the entire city. Also having said that, I recognize that I had a lot of neighbors who were renters. And the need for affordable housing in this city is, it, it's a humanitarian crisis, honestly. It's just in an urban form. And so anything where we are providing people with safety, we're literally across the street from the F Street Rec Center. And so we want people to feel safe. We want to feel that this, this is your neighborhood. And we want people to have access to green space and, and affordability. It's a no-brainer. I will be supporting this and, and very happily so. And I do think that if nothing else, it will create a, less of a divide between the homeowners in the area and the people who choose to make Everett their home. And so I hope that people can, can feel comfortable about how these units are gonna be integrated into the neighborhood.
Claudia, go ahead.
I will also be supporting this and I just had to say, Section 8 does matter to me. And that I am glad you brought that up. I've asked a few times and sometimes the developer doesn't even know what it is. So it is important to me and I'm glad you brought it up. And we're short affordable housing units. And then to be even shorter, we're short accessible affordable housing units. So to hear, in an affordable housing unit, you're putting an elevator, makes me very happy. I do think it is rather large for this area. I hope that number comes down. It will create a parking problem. We can't sugarcoat that. It's, it's, it's gonna create a parking problem. And I hope you do everything you can to mitigate that problem.
I mean, I think all, all the, a good number of the boxes were checked, at least for me. While parking could be, well, it's an issue there now, but consideration around the parking was thought out and created. I think the accessibility option, Clinic With A Heart is a great nonprofit organization and hopefully would be the organization that will be in the commercial space, which definitely satisfies the area, which is, you know, very important. So accessibility to health. And then the affordable housing, while it may not be the lowest it possibly can, given the project, but it is, in a way, a step forward. And the use of the state funds also to, to make that happen was, was very thought out. And I think also getting the community involved, residents involved and being advocates for this project was, was, was great. So it sounds like a great product, project and creative insight into it. And so I will be supporting it.
Excuse me, as a Realtor, I've seen home values double in the last five to 10 years and interest rates have doubled in the last couple of years, making homeownership extremely difficult, mostly because of the lack of, of housing. And I'm sure Mr. Mortensen would agree that we'd rather put people in houses that they can own for the strength of the neighborhood. That being said, a lot of people just can't make that move into their own home. And so we need apartments like this. And I want to give kudos, my wife and I drive around town and kind of gag at some of these apartment buildings and the lack of architecture and, and just the aesthetics of the building. And you've taken that into consideration and I think that bodes well for this project. I will also be voting yes.
I'll repeat what my fellow commissioners have said, but I do, I want to say that I'm very grateful for all the time and effort you've put into trying to grab people's voice and the green space that you are trying to put in, in addition to the public art. I am really supportive of that. I think that can also bring a community, community together in this space. And I applaud you being thoughtful and innovative when you're putting this together.
All right, I, too, will be voting in support. I do understand that it is change and that that creates some, you know, uncertainty and concern about things like parking. But I really appreciate the whole team that's been working on this and agree with Commissioner Edens that there's a difference between offering affordable housing and accepting Section 8. And I think a lot of people don't understand that, yeah, you can qualify for a Section 8 voucher and then if you ever get through the waiting list, then you have to find somebody who will take it. So the opportunity to access new, quality-built with nice amenities is a really wonderful thing and I was happy to hear that, so. Thank you. Shelley? Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero. All right, at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda may do so. Nope, okay. Take a motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Shelley?